Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the organizational board meeting. I would like to call the organizational meeting to order. All members of the board are present. And at this time, we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Brown Hall, would you do the?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to make an announcement. Please be advised that in the event of a fire emergency and an evacuation should be necessary, an alarm will sound. Please note all marked emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, I request that everyone please turn their cell phones and other electronic devices to silent. Thank you. Onto the oaths of office. These were recorded on June 25th and were administered to the three elected board members, Ms. Fletch, Ms. Pullen, Dr. Singh, and the superintendent of schools, Dr. Brown Hall. So at this time, second roll call, all board members are seated at the table. For recognition, are there any recognitions or board acknowledgements at this time? No? Okay.
No.
Yep, go ahead. Fletch, go ahead.
I wanted to thank the community for voting for the budget and also for voting for me. And I will seek to be honest, fair, and open and represent everyone, especially the children. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fletch. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to, well, it's public expression. No one signed up for public expression, for their first public expression at this time? So we'll move on to 6A, the adoption of the election process. May I have the motion to approve and adopt the election process and the election of officers as presented? Ms. Blackinger, Mr. Beulen, you. Any discussion? All in favor? Everyone, yes? Okay, thank you. Onto the nominations. Nominations for President of the Board of Education. Is there a nomination for the President of the Board of Education? Dr. Spicer.
Sorry, I felt the need to move that. First of all, I just want to commend everyone who threw their hat in the ring for this position. We were led by some really strong folks this year. It was a great first year on the board for me. Having said that, I would like to nominate Ms. Crystal Kazmerak Bogner for the position of President. Crystal is incredibly well-versed not only in board policy but education law and the workings of the school district. When she does not know something, she seeks out the answer and shares it with the group openly. All of that is incredibly commendable. And she is also incredibly open to the team to make sure that all voices are heard in conversation, something that I think is incredibly important for the board and for teams in general. So I would like to nominate her.
Thank you, Dr. Spicer. Mrs. Kazmerak Bogner, do you accept the nomination?
I do, thank you.
Any other nominations for Board President? Okay, seeing none at this time, all nominations are closed. And I will go down and get a roll call vote. So if you would say yes or no to Mrs. Kazmerak Bogner. Ms. Blackinger?
Yes.
Mr. Beulen?
Yes.
Mr. Biscalia?
Yes.
Ms. Fletch?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazmerak Bogner?
Yes.
Mr. Manah?
Yes.
Ms. Pullen?
Yes.
Dr. Singh?
Yes.
Dr. Spicer?
Yes.
Great, thank you, everyone. Mrs. Kazmerak Bogner, congratulations. Thank you. This President of the Board of Education serves a one-year term till June 30th, 2025. Next up are nominations for the Vice President of the Board of Education. Is there a nomination for the Vice President of anyone at this time? Dr. Singh?
I would like to nominate Board Member Pullen for the post of Vice President.
Pullen, do you accept this nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations for Vice President? Okay, seeing none, nominations are closed and I will do a roll call vote, yes or no, for Ms. Pullen, please. Ms. Blackinger?
Yes.
Mr. Beulen?
Yes.
Galia?
Yes.
Ms. Fletch?
Yes.
Mrs. Kazmerak Bogner?
Yes.
Mr. Manah?
Yes.
Ms. Pullen?
Yes.
Dr. Singh?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
Great, congratulations, Ms. Pullen. That is also a one-year term, effective July 1st to June 30th, 2025. So at this time, I will administer the oaths of office to Kazmerak Bogner and Ms. Pullen, and we'll do it in front of the flag over here, please. I'll do one at a time.
Let me explain.
I swear, you solemnly swear that I will support the time. And that I faithfully discharge faithfully discharge the President of the Board of Education, President of the Williamsville Central School District, for the Williamsville Central School District, according to the vast of my ability, according to the vast of my ability. Congratulations. Pullen, I solemnly swear, you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
Yeah, you're the next two.
I will faithfully discharge the duty of the Department of Education, and I will faithfully discharge.
I used to hear it when we talked to our first.
Board of Education for the Williamsville Central School.
Really, I'm trying to get into that, so I appreciate you listening.
I realize one thing, the more time you spend in it.
Now I'll just do my oath of office. I, Ms. Carrie, solemnly swear, you solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duty of the Department of Education for the Williamsville Central School District, for the Williamsville Central School District, according to the vast of my ability, the vast of my ability. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown Hall, to come and teach yourself last year.
So we'll just rearrange a little bit here. Just give me a minute. And Crystal, I'll just switch. Yes, you can just. My seat.
Who are you next to?
I, I think Crystal.
Does he listen to you? Listen.
Congratulations to you.
Come over here.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Carrie, for leading our meeting to this point. And thank you, colleagues, for voting me to serve as your next president. I'm proud of our accomplishments and plan to provide the leadership necessary to support our continual improvement. Moving on with the meeting, we are on Agenda Item 8A, per Policy 1320. I wish to appoint Ms. Blackinger to serve as parliamentarian timekeeper for the 2024-2025 fiscal year. Moving on to our annual authorization items, is there a motion to approve Agenda Items 8B through 14A as presented? Ms. Blackinger, second, Mr. Beulen, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Now to Board of Education operations, is there a motion to approve Agenda Items 15A through 15F as presented? Dr. Spicer and Dr. Singh, any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Manah?
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
So my question is, for next May 8th, the school board meeting, the budget public hearing, I'm going to be 100% out of town for that day. It's my daughter's graduation, and University of Colorado had the nerve to schedule a graduation on our board meeting. So legally, does it have to be on that May 8th? Could it be like on that Monday or even the Tuesday of that week or the week before? I mean, I don't know if anybody has the answer, we have to look into that. If it's legally, it's got to be so many days. It probably has to be the two weeks prior to May 20th, but I don't know if it could be more than two weeks. So if nobody had an answer, I think that we maybe could find an answer, and then if it's possible to do it earlier, you know, we maybe have a discussion and take a vote on that, because I would certainly like to be here, and I think the public deserves a full compliment of their elected officials at the budget public hearing. So that's my only comment, but I'm willing to, I'm ready to approve the calendar for now.
Okay, so you are not making a motion to amend the calendar?
Well, no, because I don't know if we can. So I don't know if that, you know, if it's 12 days between the budget public hearing and then the vote, could it be 16 days before? Because it would have to be no more than some day and no less than another day.
Dr. Brown Hall, do you have an answer to that?
I don't, and I apologize for that. What we will do is we'll look into it, we'll send the information out to the board members, and then it will be ripe for the August 12th board meeting.
I do know that almost all districts have it on the same day, so I don't know if that has to do with a certain amount of days.
Right, and the law is very specific into the amount of days, the timing, the notification, report meeting and stuff like that.
The minimum. When I looked at it, the only thing I could find is that there had to be a minimum of that many days.
Right, so if it was, if it was five days earlier, four days earlier, yeah, but I, you know. But look at it, unfortunately, it's one of the pieces of ed law I haven't memorized yet, but we will get looked into.
Well, after this, you will have.
Absolutely, and we'll get that out to the board members. And again, it will be ripe for August 12th, for you to either vote on amending the calendar that was passed this evening or any other decision that needs to be made. Thank you.
Okay, so should we table then 15C?
I'm going to, I'm going to. To approve it, and then I think later on we'd come back and amend it. I mean, it's 10 months from now, I think it gives us plenty of time.
All right, very good. So any further discussion? So again, all in favor to approve Agenda Items 15A through 15F as presented? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. And now, Dr. Brown Hall, I turn it over to you for Agenda Items 16A through 16C.
Thank you very much, Board President. So the first item will cover the first and the third item, because we do have information about the district safety plan in here. And then for Item B, the update on the Special Education Strategic Planning Task Force, I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Scanzuzo. But first and foremost, we do have great graduation pictures from our graduations. So Williamsville East and North were last Thursday, Williamsville East at 5:00, Williamsville North at 7:00, and then Williamsville South was on Friday at 6:00 PM. So I want to thank all the board members that attended the graduations. It's such a celebratory time, right? When we see our students who have been with us through Grade K, some through UPK, now able to walk the stage and receive their diplomas. So we're very honored that we had the privilege of educating them throughout their K-12 career. And just being at those graduations, it just brings a highlight to, you know, the weekend. The parents were all excited and happy. We had phenomenal weather for the ceremonies this year also. So I encourage you all to go online and look at the pictures that were posted. I also want to thank Dave Morales and Nick Dolapowski, who were at all of the graduations taking those pictures, and you can see all of it online. So congratulations again to our graduates. Foundation aid stakeholder feedback. Many of you are aware, we've talked about this before, that in the governor's budget, the governor set aside $2 million so that the Rockefeller Institute of Government is able to review the state education funding for foundation aid. So they are in the process of doing that, and with doing that, they do have public hearings that will be taking place in New York City, Buffalo, Farmingdale, Lorings, and Gilderland. Now, the hearing here in the Western New York region will be at the North Park Community School on Thursday, July 25th, 2024. So if you cannot attend that and want to submit written comments, you may do so on the Rockefeller Institute website. That link is in the community update, but I encourage everyone to review and provide feedback. Once the new foundation aid recommendation is made, and they say they will have that by December to the governor, that will determine the future foundation aid that all New York State school districts, all 702 districts receive. So please let your voice be heard. Our board members know about this, and they will also be submitting comments. Schools' start times and cellphone policy, as we discussed at the last board meeting in the community update, our district website has the research that we are reviewing as we convene these committees. Now, this year, Keith Bortman, Principal of South High School, was a chairperson of the school start time committee, and they did a lot of work and research reviewing that. And we are in the process now of setting up our focus groups for school start times. The recommendations will be before the board sometime February 2025, just so that we can seek approval for any changes that may be implemented in the 2025-2026 school year. If you go to the website, you will also see the detailed timeline that we are following for school start times and those committee meetings. We will also be reviewing the research for the cellphone policies. So we are looking to update our cellphone policies at the middle school and high school. We know what the research says. We want to make sure we reduce distractions during the school day for our students. So we will be convening a committee to look at that also. We'll be looking to partner with our teachers, our parents, our student governments, so that everyone, our administrators, so that everyone can sign off on our cellphone policy pledge, and that's something we can all adhere to. So on our website, you can look at the latest research, and our school start time focus groups, families, students, and staff will be able to sign up to be a part of the focus groups through WIX. The focus group portal will be open Wednesday, July 10th, and it will close on Wednesday, July 31st. Depending on the amount of interest, the district may hold a lottery to select individuals to be a part of the focus groups. Individuals selected will be notified in August, because the focus groups will kick off in late September, I believe. Our district safety plan is in Board Docs. It is Item 16C. We will be opening up our 30-day comment period, and it will close on July 31st. I encourage everyone to have a look at the district safety plan, and if you have any comments, please email any comments or feedback to contact@WilliamsvilleK12.org. We are also looking for parents or guardians to join the district safety committee. Interested individuals should email Kathleen Steele. Ms. Steele is the secretary to our Assistant Superintendent Tony Scanzuzo, and we will be looking for parents to serve on our district safety committee. Again, if we have overwhelming amount of interest, we will also do a lottery to select parents to be on that district safety committee. And that is a community update for the month of July at the reorganization meeting. I will turn it over now to Assistant Superintendent Scanzuzo. Okay, we're going to do comments and questions later, but we will take them now.
Nope, we're good. We know better.
Because if it's fresh in your mind, it might be fresh on someone else's mind watching.
I just had a quick question. Who's in charge of the Rockefeller Institute? Do we know that? Is it a private industry? Is it a, because, I mean.
Funny you should ask.
I mean, what?
And I, I, that question.
I asked that.
Funny you should ask. The New York Education Department asked that they be a part of it or that they have $1 million set aside to have an independent firm really look and research foundation aid and how it should be done. The governor set aside $2 million in her budget to have the Rockefeller Foundation do it, and the Rockefeller Foundation is an offset of the governor. So the governor does have ultimate control of the Rockefeller Foundation. So we're just hoping, hoping that the governor won't have influence before they're able to submit an independent recommendation to the governor's office.
So I asked that, I kind of knew, but.
I know, and it's good that you asked.
I wanted the.
Transparent.
I wanted constituents to understand that it's, it's important that we really push as a school board, and hopefully other school boards follow for the correct foundational aid. I mean, that truly affects every district, including ours, and all the wonderful things we can do here. So I just wanted us to understand, and I know this board from previous times that we push these type of legislations and letters, and I hope we do that going forward as a board.
And one of the things that is being discussed and through the governor's office, and don't get me wrong, our governor has shown a good amount of support for education, right? The foundation aid formula is over 17 years old, and we do understand enrollment in many school districts has decreased. However, the needs of our students have increased, right? And we see that, we know that, and we are trying to meet the needs of our students. Additional funding is needed, it is necessary. So we want that to be taken into consideration also. Again, I'm not telling you what to say when you provide feedback to the Rockefeller Institute, but these are the things that must be considered. Thank you very much, Mr. Biscalia. Board Member Beulen?
I just wanted, before Dr., Mr. S. presents, I just wanted to publicly congratulate him on leading that committee through that process, because that's like herding cats. And you did a really good job, and I just wanted to publicly express that to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Beulen, and thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Scanzuzo. We do have a lot of committee members on our committees, right? And it's important, because we want to get everyone's input, everyone's feedback. And so Mr. Scanzuzo has been able to work that committee all year long, and the committees will continue into the fall also. So Assistant Superintendent Scanzuzo, thank you very much also. Board Member Pullen?
Yes, I just had one.
Vice President Pullen, I apologize.
Thank you. Going back to the Rockefeller Foundation, I just wanted to, on July 11th, there is a webinar being done by one of our law firms that's going to be available free for all board members who are able to attend at that time. It's between 12:00 and 1:15. On the understanding of what the Rockefeller Foundation is going to be looking at. So it might be good preparation for any of us before we send our input out there to have a little background information. I do plan to attend and will share what I learned, but nothing like firsthand experience.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. I will turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Scanzuzo right now to give an update on the Special Education Strategic Planning Task Force.
Thank you, Dr. Brown Hall. Nick, do you have it up? All right, thank you. So the Special Education Task Force, Dr. Brown Hall asked me to provide an update to the Board of Education on the type of work that took place over the course of, really, we started this in January. This was an offshoot from the Western New York Education Service Council's review that they conducted last year, 2023 of our special education program. And just to kind of let you know who the members of the committee were, oh, we skipped it. There we go. Members of the committee, Suzanne Frye from the Western New York Education Service Council was the facilitator. We had Board of Education members on this committee, district administrators, building administration, as well as teachers and parents. And I appreciate Board Member Beulen's comments. It was, it was, you know, a lot of, a lot of hard work, a lot of hard discussion, a lot of compromise, just a lot of open dialogue, transparency, which we loved. And, and I think that in the end, we all came to the conclusion that, you know, we wanted to put kids first to determine what was going to be best for them. I'm proud to say that, you know, as we'll kind of get through this, that we were able to establish a vision and mission statement for our Special Education Department, which really is going to guide really all the work that we do, all the decisions that we make, all the professional development opportunities, all the initiatives that we have in place, are really going to help guide us with that vision and mission statement. And I could tell you that it started today, as we met as a department, in my own department with my directors, as we started planning for, you know, what next year is going to look like and prioritizing some initiatives. So having said that, I want to thank, publicly thank, all the members of the committee. I think the, the feedback was fantastic, their commitment and dedication to our students with special needs and what that looks like. I'm really proud of the work. It's not done yet. As Dr. Brown Hall said, we are going to continue for a couple months into the fall next year, and we're really working towards really codifying some, some goals, action plans, and what that's going to look like. In the next slide, you could see that, you know, what we did in January when we started to meet is basically review and codify the items of the 2023 Special Education Review that took place by the Western New York Education Service Council. And, you know, another offshoot of that was the Special Education Advisory Committee that's been, that was meeting since the beginning of the school year, really just talking about prioritizing our needs from that particular review that took place. And this was the committee that actually started to work together and really start to put things in place and give us kind of like a driving force, a guideline, a timeline to develop some goals and action plans. But we wanted to get stakeholder voice, and the thought exchange survey really went out to every parent, every student with an IEP, every faculty and staff member in the district, all of our administration, and that took place in April. And, you know, when the, all that information came back, all that feedback came back, that, those responses pretty much drove the work that we were doing, the themes, the areas that we were going to concentrate on, what were those top thoughts and takeaways that people, you know, really felt were important, that we needed to focus on. So, you know, taking that, all that information, we were able to, as a group collectively, work really hard to develop a vision and mission statement. And it sounds like an easy topic, but it really took us a couple months to do it before we actually, you know, wordsmithed and got the right language and verbiage, and it really kind of hit upon what all those responses really were focusing on, those key themes. In addition, we're currently working on developing a strategic plan for the Special Education Department, very similar to what we kind of have as our strategic plan for the district, with goals, overarching, long-term goals, some SMART goals, which are, they're pretty difficult to really kind of get it all down on paper and make them, you know, you know, what they should be, which is, you know, measurable, attainable, timely, and so that's, that's going to take us a few more months to kind of fulfill. And when we have all those goals and action plans, pretty much be happy to come back and report to the board what those look like. But in the meantime, what I do want to share with you is, you know, what we do have in place, and that's our vision statement. So if you take a look at this, the vision statement of the Williamsville Central School District Special Education Program is to ensure a district-wide model of excellence that fosters individual student success, well-being, and meets the unique needs of all students in the least restrictive environment. And everything that we do, every decision we make, from like I said, a PD standpoint, an initiative, is really kind of focusing on, is it kind of fulfilling and encapsulating what that vision is saying? So we want to be true to that. We know that there's a lot of time, energy, and effort that went into putting this together, and we want to honor everybody's commitment who put their thoughts into that thought exchange survey, so that we can work hard towards keeping that as our kind of focal point as we move forward. In addition to this, the mission statement of the Special Education Department states that the mission of the Williamsville Central School District Special Education Program is to ensure access to fair, equitable, and high-quality K-12 education and effective communication with all stakeholders. And so having said that, there was a lot of conversation, a lot of moving words around and a lot of discussion within that committee to really agree upon, you know, two statements, which I feel very firmly that are going to really, like I said, direct all the work that we do moving forward. And I'm proud of the work, I'm looking forward to really kind of having those goals in place and those action plans, you know, in place so that we can share them and kind of work towards, you know, a three- to five-year plan of what that's going to look like in attainment and adjusting them as we go. And that's the important piece, because the communication, we heard loud and clear, and we want to ensure that that two-way communication is open throughout. And I think with the continuation of our CAC committee, you know, that's another kind of avenue that we use to communicate with all of our stakeholders in addition to. you know, that's another kind of avenue that we use to communicate with all of our stakeholders in addition to SEPSA, you know, to kind of get the word out about what we're doing from a department standpoint when it comes to special education. And at this point, I'd be happy to take any questions or thoughts that anyone may have.
Mr. Beulen?
I just want to assure the people out there that the fifty thousand feet work is done.
Yeah.
Now, we, we got to be where the rubber meets the road. And that's, I think what we accomplished was that, I think we're all speaking the same language now, the same vocabulary. We have all the goals set out. Now we got to make sure that everyone's on the same page, from the teacher in the classroom to us, and make sure that we meet the needs as the mission statement says. But we made good first steps. We have to make sure that we continue the momentum and finish the work that we started. But I do, again, I congratulate you on shepherding us through that process.
Well said.
Both committees that.
Yeah, no, well said, and thank you. I appreciate your, your participation as well.
Mr. Biscalia?
Now, as you come back with updates in terms of this committee, I just hope that communicate, when we talk about effective communication, we include, you know, the people that are there day to day with the students, the teachers. You know, I've heard previously, years past, you know, years ago too, that they're not always included in communication. I think they're the ones that are on the battlegrounds. And I hope that ensures that they're part of that communication, you know, to make sure it's an effective system going forward.
Yeah. No, I could, I could assure you that with our restructuring of our, with our directors, we talked about this today, we met for about four and a half hours this afternoon to really talk about, you know, what that's going to look like, how we're going to have consistent communication amongst the directors when they're talking to their constituents, teachers, so that we're all on the same page, and we're not working in silos, we're working together.
Awesome.
Thank you very much, Assistant Superintendent Skanzuzo. I turn it back over to you, President.
Thank you.
Were we reviewing the district safety plan at this time?
We, we are, I mentioned it in the community update about the thirty-day comment period and how they can submit comments.
Thank you. So were there any other comments or questions from the board before we move on? Okay. Moving on to Agenda Items seventeen A through seventeen F. Seventeen A, the National Conference on Adolescent Sleep and School Start Times will be held in Baltimore on October eighteenth and nineteenth. Board member, I'm sorry, Vice President Pullan will be attending from the board. High school graduations were held last week. Are there any comments from board members who attended the graduations? Vice President Pullan?
I attended South graduation, and I wanted to say, give a shout out to Mr. Boardman's speech. He has a very unique way of providing a speech, but this year particularly, and my son also commented about it being that my grandson was the recipient of hearing that speech as well. Mr. Boardman writes an introduction, and he writes a conclusion, but in the middle, he just kind of wings it depending on what has been said and so forth. And so he says he just writes, "Speechy, speechy, speech." But a part of that was that he said, "But we're, to the graduates, where you are right now is the period on the introduction of your life." And I was very taken with that, that he said, "Most all students go through school, and they get through this point, and they have a high school graduation. But what happens from here on out is up to you." And I just thought that was a very, that was a very poignant speech. So I wanted to give a shout out to him for that.
Awesome.
Thank you. Any other comments from those attended graduations? Okay. I would just like to say that Dr. Brownhall provided a heartwarming message to graduates that's available on our district's YouTube page. And on behalf of the Board of Education, we wish all the graduates and their families well as they begin this next exciting phase of their lives and become contributing members of our global community. Onto Item seventeen B. On July twenty-fourth, we will have a special board meeting to approve the contract for Casey Middle School and review the board self-evaluation. The board retreat will follow the special meeting, and then at the August thirteenth meeting, the Veterans Tax Information will be on the agenda. Seventeen C, Board of Education Community Forum tentative dates are September twenty-eighth from nine AM until eleven thirty AM, and March twenty-fifth, following our budget work session. Seventeen D, which is ECASB, and seventeen E, NISBA. The event dates for those organizations are listed in board docs. Does anyone have anything to report under ECASB or NISBA? Okay. And Vice President Pullan just already announced the Foundation Aid Study on Thursday, July eleventh, which I also planned to mention. For seventeen F, correspondence was received regarding website information for the school start times, cell phone policy, and team time. Eighteen A, in board docs are the district-wide liaison guidelines and assignments. At our July retreat, there will be an opportunity to review and request particular building assignments. And at the August meeting, these assignments will be fulfilled for approval and updated with any edits. Are there any questions at this time about the liaison assignments? Okay. May I have a motion to approve Agenda Items twenty through twenty-four, Minutes, Personnel, Business and Finance, District Facilities and Support Services, and Exceptional Education, Special Needs, and Student Activities as presented? Mr. Manah and Dr. Singh, is there any discussion?
I just have a question.
Yes.
On the, one second. On the Business and Finance twenty-two. Just out of, I know we have talked about this earlier, but when does the school year end in terms of your budget? Is it, does it end in June, or does it?
June thirtieth.
Because at the end of May, we have around twelve million in unencumbered balance. Would that go into the reserves if anything is left over at the end of June? And we also have eighty million dollars in investments. Is that something that is the cumulative value of all the reserves you're holding as investment?
I'm not sure what you're asking. So the twelve million, if, and keep in mind, so after we have all of our books audited, and that's what the board will be approving once October comes, when they find that final audit, and then the reserves amount for any fund balance will result in the reserve amounts increasing based on that, you know, money that was not spent. Now, investments are what the district has in investments, the eighteen million dollars.
Eighteen million dollars.
You were saying, which, which item are you referring to specifically?
The question I asked earlier was regarding the general fund. And I was.
But that was twenty-two E? So anyone watching knows what we're referencing?
Yeah, let me see. Sorry.
If I may just jump in, just to clarify, so the twelve million, it's really, it's, it might be incurred but not reported. So you might have money rolling in in July that you incurred in May or June, but have not paid out by the end of the school year.
Right, but I do want to, I want to reference, so I, so I know exactly what Dr. Singh is, is speaking of.
The twelve million dollars is unencumbered balance, that is the general fund analysis?
Right, so in the general fund analysis, we have, in twenty-two E, we have the budget status report and the revenue report. So which one are you referring to?
No, I just wanted, the twelve million dollars that we have right now at the end of May, I'm assuming we'll spend some by the end of June. So whatever is left will go into our reserves.
Right, whatever is left, unencumbered.
Correct.
Correct.
That's in the budget status report.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Another thing was in the monthly cash report, which is Item twenty-two C. In the general.
Oh, in the treasurer's report?
Yeah. No, just wanted to know, we have eighty million dollars in investments. So is that the cumulative value of all the reserves, or?
No, that would not be the accumulated value of all the reserves. I don't know if our Assistant Superintendent of Finance.
Dr. Singh, I, I mean, what are you, I guess, I'm trying to get a little clarification on what you're asking.
My question is, what is eighty million dollars?
I mean, those are, those are outstanding investments as of May thirty-first. So we have certain monies that we're not using, and while it's sitting idle, it's invested, and we're, you know, gaining interest on that investment that we have. So it's a pot of money that we'll use, some of it's going to be fund balance, that will, you know, assign for other purposes. For example, we have the capital project for the air conditioning. A portion of that fund balance is going to be assigned to that capital project. So it's money that we've accumulated over multiple fiscal years that we use for different purposes. And as the superintendent said, you know, some of it can be in different reserve funds as well.
So that was my question, actually. Is the money that was part of the reserves also included in eighty million dollars?
Is it part of that eighty million? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's not ninety-two, it's.
I know.
The ninety-two rating.
Thank you.
Okay, was there any other discussion? Okay, so again, this is a motion to approve Agenda Items twenty-three, twenty-four. May I have a motion as presented? Mr. Beulen and Dr. Singh? Favor? Motion carries unanimously. We approved several new appointments this evening. I would like to congratulate the newly appointed Assistant Director of Professional Learning, Danielle Alterio, Assistant Principal of Heim Elementary School, Lindsay Johnson, and Principal Maple West Elementary School, Kate Wendling. Congratulations. And any and all of you are welcome to step up to the podium to say a few words if you would like.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Alterio, and I wanted to first take this opportunity to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Brownhall, the district leadership team, Director Rue, and the interview committee for appointing me tonight as the Assistant Director of Professional Learning. I'm very excited to be joining the Williamsville team and to continue to support our teachers in providing the exceptional education, educational experience that they provide for our students. So thank you again for the opportunity, and I'm excited to get to work.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lindsay Johnson. I just wanted to start off and say that I'm really honored to accept the assistant principalship at Heim Elementary. I wanted to thank the Board of Education, Dr. Brownhall, Mrs. Floriano, and the interview committee for all of your support. I've always been passionate about elementary education. This feels like a really great fit. Foundational learning is, is where I have my heart. I just want to say I'm really excited to join the families, the staff, the community at Heim Elementary. Once again, thank you for the opportunity. I'm excited to continue contributing to the great work that's already going on in this school, and I'm really looking forward to the journey ahead. Thanks so much.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kate Wendling, and I just would like to thank Dr. Brownhall and the leadership team and the board about for this incredible opportunity to be the principal at Maple West Elementary. I'm going to continue my journey in Williamsville, and I couldn't be more excited to be a part of the Maple West community. I look forward to working closely and collaboratively with the whole Maple West community. And I'm ready to hit the ground running and get started and get ready to work. So thank you so much.
Congratulations.
You, Kate.
Congratulations to all of you again, and I believe pictures are going to be taken. We also approved several retirements. Like to thank the following retirees for their service to the district. Effective January second, Deborah Calora, Teacher, Casey Middle School, for twenty-two years of service. Cynthia Langer, Teacher-Aid, Maple West Elementary School, for ten and a half years of service. And Judith Wilkie, Clerk-Typist, Student Services Department, for nineteen years of service. Thank you for your service. Moving on to Item twenty-six. Is it twenty-six or twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Thank you, my eyes are red. Is there a motion for the first reading of Policy twenty-one, ten as presented? Dr. Spicer, is there a second? Mr. Biscalia, any discussion? Vice President Pullan?
We're looking at this policy as a result of the work of the new orienting committee. And one of the things that we did talk about and felt strongly about was having a mentor for all of our newly elected board members during the first year of service. So I, Mrs. Carey had indicated a paragraph that we might want to insert into that policy, and I would recommend that we do so.
Is there any further discussion on that? Would you like to make a motion to amend the policy then?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to amend this policy to include the paragraph outlined in board docs regarding mentorship for all newly elected board members the first year.
Is there a second on the amended motion? Dr. Singh, all favor of the amended motion? Motion carries. Oh, I'm sorry, is there anyone opposed? Okay, any, I'm sorry, any discussion on the amended motion? Okay.
Stuart.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Mr. Beulen?
I just want to say, I think this is a great idea. As someone who is new, this is going to be really helpful to new board members. Because it's like, like a football coach shrinking through a fire hose. And I, I think it's a really good idea, will really help new members get their feet on the ground, sort of making, help them understand where they stand and how to work inside the process.
Yeah, I, I echo that. I'm not a fan of mentoring, especially for individually elected officials, but this is, I think, clear enough what the mentor position is, and really what it isn't. But I think, I think it's fine. I think it'll be helpful. It would certainly have helped me. I'm sure it'll help Board Member Fletch navigate a difficult first year. And I'm, I think it's a fine idea.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? So back to the amended motion. All in favor of the amended motion? Motion carries unanimously. There are no curriculum or legislative matters to discuss under twenty-six and twenty-seven? Yes?
We need to table that for the second reading.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. I got lost in the. I got lost in the amended motion.
Yes.
May I have a motion to table 2210 for the second reading and adoption at the August board meeting? Mr. Biscalia, second Mr. Manah? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. There are no curriculum or legislative matters to discuss under 26 and 27. Under Item 28, does anyone have any matters to discuss under Committee of the Whole? Mr. Biscalia?
I, I don't think this falls under Committee of the Whole, but this is where I'm going to say it. I just want to commend, it's, I come from an Italian home. My mother was like the be-all, end-all. And it's wonderful to see many women being put in positions of power. And I don't mean it in a bad way, you know, but, you know, a, a board member that's going to, that's a woman that becomes president and VP, I see administrators that are coming into the field, where I am a teacher in this field, and I've only had male administrators. It's, it's wonderful to see my sister, who is, I don't want to say it in a bad way, but she's, she's grown up a strong voice, and it's just wonderful to see that we're going to dynamic in leadership roles, hiring women, and, and hopefully, you know, this branches out into other, you know, not just gender, but ethnicities, religious backgrounds. It's, it's wonderful to see that, you know, Williamsville hopefully can be at the forefront of that. It's special to me. I know it means a lot to my family where I've come from, and I've seen, Dr. Spicer's met my family, they know my sister very well, and I, I just think it's wonderful. It's, it's, it's special to me. So I just wanted to say that, you know, it means a lot. Congratulations to them again, so.
And thank you for your comments, Mr. Biscalia. Were there any other matters to discuss under Committee of the Whole? Okay. Item 29A is our second public expression. If anyone is interested in the audience, in the audience would like to speak at this time, please step up to the podium. And as I see no one stepping up to the podium, we will move on. And so this will conclude our organizational meeting. There will be a special board meeting July 24th with a retreat after, and the next scheduled regular board meeting is August 13th. Is there a motion to adjourn the organizational meeting? Parliamentarian Bluckenter, Mr. Beulen, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.